I'd like to call the order of the Finance Committee regular meeting. Would you please call roll?
Yes, thank you. Chairman Reinhart?
Here.
Vice Chair Lloyd?
Here.
Member Bush? Member Piscariyo? Member Hoagland?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. What do we got? All right. If you guys can review the minutes, go over them real quick if you haven't seen them already. Once you've reviewed them, I'd be glad to take a motion. Got a recommendation for approval of the minutes. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. No impose. All right, passes three zero. Previous business. City Attorney Ethics Training. We have a link. Is that?
Can you hear me? Okay. Yes, so Jay is going to be emailing the link to you because the link will expire after seven days. So you'll be able to click the link and download it and then watch the ethics training because he doesn't come and do like a presentation in person. He's made a video and then you receive the pamphlet, the last meeting, I believe, and that kind of covers all of the sunshine laws.
Okay. All right. Who's summer dates for the conference?
Yes, so the summer conference already passed for this year, but next year it's going to be June 25th through the 29th of 2022 in the Rosen Shingle Creek here in Orlando.
Where was it? Where was it this year?
I believe this year was virtual.
Was it?
It was virtual.
Oh, that's terrible. Rose of next year. I'd recommend if you guys can get a chance to go, go do it. And it's local, so it's very easy. All right. Wendy, you're up.
At this time, Chairman, we'd like to request if we could potentially move the discussion for year-end quarterly investment portfolios. We have PFM on the line, which will be presenting the third quarter period through June 30th for a portion of the portfolio so that we have them on the phone for you and they don't have to wait through the entire meeting. And then we'll have our senior accountant, Ms. Donna Cooley, present and tie up for you. Initially, she'll give you some background before we get Mr. Scott on the phone for you, and then if that's okay with you, we'll proceed that way.
Sounds good. Thank you. Donna?
Thank you. Just a little bit of background. We brought PFM Asset Management onboard at the beginning of this year, earlier this year, to help manage our portfolio. And currently, this is the very first quarter that they've managed for us, so this is the first time they've been able to present the quarterly performance, and that's what we're going to do in just a moment. Currently, they only have about $15 million under management because, as we've spoken in the past, some of you may not have heard this, that we've got the majority of our funds in local financial institutions, SunTrust. We're getting a very attractive rate on those funds, and that's just the best place for those to maximize the earnings at this time. As that sunsets, it'll sunset next year in February, we're slowly transferring the balance over to PFM each month to give them a little bit more to work with, and eventually it'll have the entire portfolio by next February.
Is there a, just curious, is there any type of minimum standards that we want them to maintain when it comes to percentages?
Yes, there's an asset allocation there, and he will speak to that when he goes through his presentation. Yes. So with that, we have Scott Sweden with PFM Asset Management on the phone. Scott, can you hear me?
I can. Hello, everyone?
Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon. I'm looking forward to being able to do this in person. Typically, at least during the pandemic, we did this via a video call, WebEx typically, but in the future, as Donna has explained, this is the first full quarter where we've actually managed the portfolio for you. And a little bit of the backstory was a little bit faint for me to hear, but as I think Donna explained, as more assets become liquid, we'll be able to deploy that into the strategy that we have set up for you. And without further ado, I know you've got a pretty packed agenda, so I'll try to keep it under 10 minutes. So I'm going to actually forego the first part of the quarterly performance report. And from my conversations with Donna, it seems that previously you've been very used to having a condensed report. And as you can see, this particular report is 43 slides, so I'm not going to cover every slide, so you can put your minds at ease for that. But any questions before I get started?
No, sir.
Okay. If you could go to page 16.
Page 16 is the one that you have separate, is going to be the updated one.
Right, that's the asset allocation slide.
We're there, Scott.
And just let me know when you're there and I'll go ahead.
Yes, we're there now.
Okay. Now, this particular slide really serves two purposes. First of all, if you look at the bottom right column, in compliance, you can see that, yes, you are in compliance across the board, given the various asset classes. To the left of that, you can see the levels that are permitted by your investment policy for each of those asset classes. And if we look at the upper portion of the slide, I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. I must be getting feedback. The upper portion of the slide, the bar chart, the gold portion of the bar indicates the maximum levels that are permitted by your investment policy. The blue shaded region is where you were allocated at the end of the second quarter. So for the most part, not factoring in the bank account at SunTrust, we've got a considerable buffer between where you're allocated and the levels that are permitted by your investment policy. So going forward, where we're actually able to implement our strategy, it's going to be, it's going to allow us to be very nimble, very flexible, and when opportunities do arise in the marketplace, we'll be able to take advantage of that, and you will be the ultimate beneficiary of that. Now, if we can move to page 17?
All right. Yes.
Now, this particular slide shows that you're in compliance with an individual issuer. So again, if we look at the far right column, you can see you're in compliance across the board. To the left of that, you can see the breakdown per your investment policy for each individual issuer. So for instance, you can see 5% for corporate bonds, 100% for treasuries, 40% for agencies, 25% in Florida Prime, 100% in the bank account, and 25% roughly money market cash balance. So again, this will be a little bit more extensive once we actually start to put more money to work for you, but just trying to give you an overview here. Now, if we move to page 18?
All right.
Now, this is a good snapshot of the portfolio. And keep in mind, if we take, just take a look at the upper right pie chart, you can see the breakdown, and basically, the bulk of the portfolio is federal agencies and U.S. Treasuries, and you have a sliver in corporates. At the left of that, you can see the credit ratings by standard and forth. And the bottom portion of the slide, the maturity distribution, you can see the breakdown from five years and under. In the left of that, the portfolio statistics column, now, if we just take a look at rough numbers at the end of the second quarter, your portfolio is valued at about 15.2 million. Now, we actually inherited close to 12 million in securities, so that's been a bit of an obstacle for us. You know, we're going to have to wait until some of those are liquid, and also, as we get additional capital, we'll be able to, you're going to see much more activity, and your, our strategy will start to become very evident over the next several quarters. But the two areas that I want to focus on are yield at cost. That's what your portfolio is yielding, that's 1.17%, and yield at market, essentially what that is, that 0.40%, that's reflective of if we were to go into the marketplace today and repurchase all of the securities that you hold in your account, that's roughly where we would be at, given current market rates, maybe give or take 10 basis points. But that gives you a pretty good idea. You can see your average maturity for the portfolio is 2.66 years, and your average credit rating is double A. It's actually double A or better, but it gives you a good idea of the portfolio in general. Now, if we just move forward one more slide, now, this is actually the portfolio performance for the second quarter. And again, you can see that the portfolio during the quarter had a positive return of 0.05%. The one-to-five-year U.S. Treasury index, which is what we're using as the benchmark for the portfolio, that was actually at 0.11%, so there was underperformance of 0.06%. And really, the reason behind that, if you take a look at the one-to-five-year indices for both treasuries and agencies year-to-date, at least through the second quarter, treasuries were, had a negative 0.42%, and the agencies had a negative 0.25%. So the vast majority of your portfolio is in agencies, which we inherited, so those have underperformed year-to-date, at least through the end of the second quarter, and treasuries as well have underperformed. And really, the story there, the first quarter of 2021, we saw a significant steepening in the yield curve. So as yields go up, the prices on any fixed income instrument depreciate. Essentially, there was a bit of a reverse of that in the second quarter. The yield curve flattened a bit, but not much from actually where it was at. But still, it gives you a good idea, between the first and second quarter, agencies and treasuries underperformed. So that's really the reason that there was an underperformance versus the benchmark. Again, as we're able to implement our strategy, you'll start to see corporates and some other instruments in there just to give you a much broader diversification. Now, if we move forward to slide 25.
All right, we're there.
This is a, this is a great slide to, in the future, for instance, it'll just give you a great idea of what our portfolio managers are doing from quarter to quarter. And you can see, basically, at the end of the first quarter, that's essentially when we inherited the portfolio. We had 80.4% in agencies, 19.6% of the portfolio was in treasuries. And at the end of the second quarter, we were, for the most part, you can see the agencies are reducting there from 80% to 54%, and treasuries, we did some buying after we were able to take over the portfolio to pick up some attractive yield. So we went from a 19.6% percentage of the portfolio up to 45.6%. Now, again, as we start to implement our strategy, you're going to see many more asset classes within this that are permitted by your investment policy, and it's going to help you get a much clearer picture on how we're navigating volatile markets and where we're finding value from quarter to quarter.
Question, quick question for, yes, question, on this, on the, on the U.S. Treasury. Are the decisions, they're affected at all by things that the Federal Reserve does, or is it a totally separate function in terms of the reason for investing in the treasuries, meaning the Federal Reserve decisions to raise or lower interest and all of that? Does that affect any of this?
Well, that's a great question. The Fed has been extremely transparent on what their intentions are, and you know, that's been extremely helpful to stabilizing the market. In the first quarter, for instance, when we saw, basically, there was a lot of individuals going into treasuries because essentially there were some inflationary fears. The economy seemed to be improving based on a number of different factors, but since then, you know, the Fed has still commented that they feel the inflationary pressures are transitory, which, you know, they don't think that that's going to be a long-term trend. Some of the numbers that you're seeing as far as the inflation indicators, we're comparing those two levels back in 2020, which essentially, we were in a recession, the economy was essentially shut down, and then, you know, we're looking at numbers now that are, you know, the highest in 30 years, the highest since 2010. For instance, CPI, 5.4%, that's roughly the highest in 30 years. The core PCE, which is the personal consumption expenditure, that's the number that the Fed monitors to essentially figure out where we're at in regards to inflation and pricing pressures. And then even the PPI, which came in at 7.3%, so again, these are all historical year-over-year increases, but we're going from levels that were extremely depressed in 2020. So to answer your question, we look for value every day. The fixed income markets are very fluid right now, to say the least, and it comes down to supply and demand oftentimes. But treasuries, you know, when we do have these fears in regards to the economy, things of that nature, now you see the Delta variant spreading rapidly, roughly, what, 80% of the new cases are being attributed to the Delta variant and also individuals that have not been vaccinated. So ultimately, we're just looking for value, we're looking for yield. So the fact that the Fed, the Fed has been so transparent, that just goes in line with our thought process.
Thank you.
So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. And if we just move to slide 31, this will just give you a good idea of some activity that we've started to do, like the upper, are you on the slide?
Yeah, yes, I am.
Okay, perfect. You can basically see the buys that were made in the portfolio. You can see treasuries, the yield at market over on the far right. So bought some treasuries, the J.P. Morgan Chase corporate notes. Most of the value that we found in the corporate space, they've been new issues, they've been in the financial sector, and primarily, they've been bank names. And if you look at slide 32, this will give you an idea of where we're adding value, even though we're a bit constricted with the current holdings. You can see that we were able to sell a U.S. Treasury note for a realized gain of $6,285. So we are constantly monitoring the portfolios, and when we do see a differential where we're able to take a profit prior to maturity, we're certainly going to do that on your behalf. So we could have let that mature at par, at the maturity date, but we would not have realized a gain for you. So just wanted to give you a few ideas on what it is we're doing, and once we're able to bring in more assets into the portfolio, that's going to free things up for us quite a bit. And you know, that's essentially it in a nutshell. Are there any questions on what I've covered so far?
No, there's not.
Okay. And just to give you an idea, looking forward, I had a discussion with your portfolio manager last night, and again, I've already explained the underperformance, and that's primarily because the majority of your portfolio, as it transferred over, is in treasuries and agencies, and both year-to-date through the second quarter, negative returns, so that's in there. But looking forward, as we do start to free up capital, we're going to be able to diversify your portfolio, we're primarily going to be looking at corporates, once we're able to do that, and again, probably asset-backed securities, once we can find some value in that area as well. But that's pretty much it in a nutshell. The first portion of the report is market economic commentary, and you know, ideally, in the future, we'll be able to meet face-to-face, that will, it's always helpful to put a face with a name, and you know, I'll be happy to walk you through the entire report if need be, so.
Well, thank you very much. I think you hit the spots we needed to know about.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Donna. Is there no questions then?
No, there's not.
I have a couple of hearing.
No questions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trying to find, whoops. All right. Well, I don't know what I just did here.
I think Jay's controlling it for better.
Is Jay controlling it? All right.
Yeah, he's switching back.
All right.
They're switching to the, our bar.
Okay. All right. You also, I believe, have in your packet just a one-page total return report, and that goes over the total return on the funds that we spoke about that are still locally invested. They're here, the majority of them are in SunTrust. We began the beginning of the quarter with about $150 million. The bulk of that was in SunTrust, but we did have a small amount in Bank of America. That account since has been closed and transferred to SunTrust. Then we have about $2 million in Florida Prime. We ended the quarter with about $164 million invested in these accounts. And you can see to the right, under the total return, these returned about almost 1%. It's blending in those, the lower rates, offsetting that 1% at SunTrust, which earned about 98 basis points on those funds, or about $385,000. And again, as we slowly move towards the end of the year and the beginning, coming to that sunsetting of those rates at SunTrust in February, we're going to slowly fund money each month to PFM so they can fully implement their strategy for the portfolio going forward.
And you think by February, all of it will be transferred?
Yes, it will. Everything, the bulk of out of SunTrust will be transferred. We always keep funds current for operation purposes, but the investable portion, yes, will be transferred over to PFM so that they can manage those funds professionally.
Awesome.
Any other questions that I can answer?
No, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Certainly, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Wendy, you want to rock and roll with this?
Yes, sir. Actually, the Deputy Finance Director will be presenting the third quarter unaudited financial performance for today.
So Jeff Cooper, Deputy Finance Director, will be going through the third quarter budget report. And as you mentioned, this is unaudited, so this is from October 1st through June 30th. So your top 10 revenues, I won't go through each of them, but through June 30th, we've collected 85% of our budgeted revenues of the top 10 revenues. So we're through 75% of the fiscal year as of June 30th, so the ones that are significantly below that 75%, I will touch on those. So the economic-based ones, the infrastructure sales taxes of 1%, and the county gas taxes specifically, those are only collected through the month of May, so we haven't collected through June. We also get a quarterly payment in the 1% fund as well, so we don't have that either. So we're actually improving. We started the fiscal year in the 1% fund, collecting about $300,000 per month. We're up to $450,000, if you can believe that. So we're on track not to meet our budgeted revenues, however, better than expected. About 5.2 million is what we should collect in the 1% fund. County gas taxes are pretty stable, about $110,000 per month, and once again, that's only been collected through May as well. And the public service utility taxes has only been collected through May also. The ad valorem taxes, of course, we've collected most of those, 96% through June 30th, and that is up to 98.2% as of today. Any questions on the revenues?
No, sir.
Okay. Major fund revenues, once again, we're through 75% of the year. For the general fund, we've collected 67%. Some of that delays because a lot of the parks and rec-based revenue doesn't happen until the summertime, so we're in the middle of that, so that's still to come. Building fund is actually significantly below what our budgeted revenues are. We're only doing approximately 100 permits per month at this point, so I think there's a lot of growth to come. It just hasn't happened at this point, at least from the permit perspective. Any questions on the major fund revenues?
No, sir.
Okay. Major, major fund expenditures, so through 75% of the year, we list the budget for the year, the actual, and this, these amount includes encumbrances. So those are purchasers that haven't been actually expended yet, so no major concerns there. We do have, have only spent 50% of stormwater because there is a pending large project in there that hasn't been encumbered or expended yet. Any questions of major fund expenditures? Major fund surplus and deficit, this is just your current performance year-to-date, your year-to-date revenues, less your actual expenditures, which also includes encumbrances, the purchasers that haven't actually been expended yet. So the only two of note, sanitation fund has a deficit of 1.2 million. However, $1 million of that is an encumbrance for our tipping fees, so that's an ongoing thing each month. And we also have purchased a side loader, an additional side loader, to start adding new routes as we grow, and that is 329,000 encumbrances that's included in that actual figure. Also, for the building fund, you can see has a large deficit. That's due to the $3.8 million we transferred to the Capital Projects Fund for the new atrium addition to City Hall. Of course, that hasn't occurred yet, and it hasn't been encumbered, but as far as the building fund goes, the funds have been transferred, so that's why the building fund looks like it does. Any questions on the major fund surplus and deficit?
No, sir.
And finally, the general fund expenditures by department. So we're through 75% of the year, so ideally, you only have 25% to 35% of your budget left. We have a lot more than that in many cases. The primary reason for that is The primary reason for that is salary and benefits. We project being fully staffed, and we generally are not. So, at this point, we're projecting $2 million-plus salary and benefit surplus for the general fund. So, most of these are as a result of that. In particular department you have questions on?
Where are we understaffed? What department or departments?
Right now, we have, I believe, 10 vacant in the police department. I believe they just hired two. Not sure of the start date. Information technology department has been, had vacant positions. They're starting to hire now. The community development has had several vacancies through the year. You know, even if...
Kind of across the board.
Right. Just, it's just the gap in between positions, you know? You're projecting as if you're going to have it, that position filled the entire year. Even in finance, we had an unexpected loss of our property technician. And so, there's going to be about six weeks between when he left and when the new staff member comes on board. So, all that becomes salary savings. So, that's pretty typical for any year.
And if I may, to provide you some statistics that we just received just on real, what's happening real-time. Manning numbers are right now set at like 717 employees. We currently, as of June, paid 680 live checks on payroll. So, we have about 80 vacancies across the city.
Do we know how many we're going to be proposing this year for employees?
Yes, sir. We are proposing 18 new positions citywide. 11 of those positions will be in the general fund. And those are new additions to the Manning.
Yes, 18 citywide and...
11 to the general fund, sir.
And also, in these general fund expenditure budgets, city council contingency is included in those. So, right now, it's actually changed since we printed this report. City council contingency has $4,837,000. And of course, we don't intend to spend that. So, that, as you can see, that's why city council on the top has 95 percent of their budget remaining because most of their budget is just contingency in case of emergency. Any questions on general fund departmental expenditures?
No, sir.
If not, thank you very much. And that does it for the quarterly report. And now, I believe Wendy's going to jump into the annual budget.
We actually, I think we had prior business, and we normally take a break and let you guys get some food and stuff like that. So, if I can, I just want to verify... This is what happens when we have too many meetings and have a thousand agendas. Can I get the turn as well for this meeting? We have other business, if you'd like to move to that, Chairman?
Yes, we can do other business. I'm just going down the list, checking my stuff off.
Yeah, okay.
But yes, other business I see is our next meeting, which is coming up. But like she said, what we normally will do is we take a break. I usually will feed you. After that, directors will be arriving, and they'll be presenting. Is it going to be the two of you guys? And then, if we need a question, they will...
Yes, sir. So, what the protocol we've had for the city this year in order to make sure we get home on time before the sun rises is myself and the city manager will go through whatever questions and go through all the funds for you as listed. If there's an operational question that we possibly, between myself and the city manager cannot answer, and you'd like further clarify, we can call, and the city manager will call that director to answer that. We want to limit them to make sure that they don't give you the sun and the moon, kind of just straight to the point so we can go home. So, we're trying to keep them at about three minutes, you know what I mean? But if I've done my homework and Bill's done his, I think we can carry it tonight and make sure we get us to goal. So, we got a lot of information to go through, but I think, like I said, we streamline it the best we can. And definitely should be an improvement from last year, as every year should be. So, you do have, got some food, some sandwiches there for you and...
Just wanted to explain what's going to happen after we, once we do our first meeting, or excuse me, our second meeting. Towards the end, we can make recommendations that we want to make. We'll kind of adjourn the meeting. Then we'll start meeting three, discuss the recommendations, vote on it, done.
I'm good through meeting nine, if you need me.
I wouldn't say that if I were you.
Chairman Reiner, for this year, just a quick question on protocol for you, how you like to run it. But once you develop any recommendations, the council workshop is Monday at 3:00. It starts off. So, how would you like this year to kick off? How to present the finance committee's recommendation? Would you...
I can... I'm in a conference in Orlando. Meeting starts at 3:00?
Yes, sir. So, I have some options for you. If, because I figured, like I said, you had some responsibilities. If you'd like, we can draft whatever tonight you decide and leave it as a memorandum from you to the finance, to the city council. And I'll present that as your document for them, if you'd like. We can arrange to have something like PFM and a quick phone call at the beginning of the budget meeting or something. Or I'll arrange what we can do with that. But like I said, easiest venue, we can take all your comments and recommendations and prepare a memo and submit that at the beginning of the budget workshop for the council, your preference, whatever you like, or if you can make it.
I would like to, you know, I'd like them to, in the past, like the board members, so they can actually see who is on the board. If you guys are able, I don't know what your schedules are like.
On Monday?
Yeah, on Monday, at 3:00.
If you're able at 3:00. Yes, it'll be in here. They'll horseshoe this thing out. Usually, I'm just trying to think if I can make it. It's my first day at the conference, I don't know what to expect.
Sure. Well, you can definitely designate if you'd like.
Well, I'll do my best to make it. And if I can't, then we'll explain. But I think, well, once our recommendations are here, I just like whoever's on the board, if they're able to come.
Yes, sir.
They can get a name and a face, see who's volunteering and helping out. And it's just voluntary. So, if you can make it, great. If you can't, that's fine. It's nothing... I just want, sometimes when we have these and we spend, you know, however many hours, 10 or 12 hours tonight that we're going to be here.
Just need a little more heads up to keep that...
Yeah, normally, it's not. Normally, it's like August something. So, they're really just, we're done, and they're going right into it. So, it's normally not this quick of a turnaround.
Just had a tight timeframe this year.
Police are already arriving in the house, former police. Beautiful shirt, though. All right. If there is no other questions, then I'll do my best to get here. If, again, I just don't know what to expect for Monday in the conference.
Yeah, I mean, I could change it. Like I said, once you figure out your schedule too, instead of, again, being at the beginning, we could put it when you arrive.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. I can, I can call once I arrive and figure out, hey, what's your agenda? Can I bail? And if I can, I can come here and make it at 4:00. I'll just say, hey, I'll be there 4:00.
Sure.
We can reach out to him and let him know, and whoever else.
Sure, we can change the designation and order, so no big deal.
Probably make it by like 4:15, 4:30, something like that.
Well, we'll see. And if we have to, then I'd at least like to name with a face.
Absolutely.
See who they've appointed and the efforts that they put in, I think. It's a very quick meeting. I mean, it's not like we're, basically, this is what happened, this is what we did. This is who was on the board. They're usually very prescientive, and then meeting, and we're done. So, just sure your heads up. If there is no other questions, meeting's adjourned. Back here, what, 6?
Thank you, Donna.
Get you started at 6?